All right, I'd like to call this May 2nd, 2013 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Actually, we have an addition to the agenda. We're going to put it after Item 8, and it is the emergency purchase from the Police Department. I get a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Want to get a motion for approval for the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, old business. Item 2, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on April 18th, 2013. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item 3, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance 130406, amendments to the zoning code relating to bus shelters and bus stops. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance specifically amends the code relative to bus shelters within building setback areas. Building shel- uh, bus shelters are regulated by Section 204.8 of the zoning code, and currently they're only allowed within building setback areas within areas zoned for single-family residential or multifamily residential units of at least 10. And we believe this was designed or developed this way specifically for bus stops for a school system, and that public transit wasn't originally considered. And as you know, the UCHRA is operating our Cookville Area Transit System, or CATS, which is our bus system that runs through the city, and they've contacted us about the Planning Department about locating at least two bus shelters within the city, and both locations would be within building setback areas. And again, that's currently not allowed in the zoning code. And the amendment would allow shelters within building setback areas within all areas or all zones within the city, subject to 10 specific conditions. This is the shelter design that they've submitted, and it is basically a 10 by 7 structure that would have to sit on by one of the conditions on a concrete or a solid surface foundation. These are the 10 conditions that are proposed in the ordinance amendment. Number 1, it cannot impair visibility or create safety hazards. To be located within the ride of why they must have written approval of the city. If it does have opaque walls, but currently they're not proposing that, but if they do have shelters with opaque walls, then a minimum setback of 15 feet from the street edge would have to be met. The amendment would prohibit signage or advertising of any type on the shelter, with the exception of identification of the bus company and the posting of relevant scheduled service information. It would have to be connected to the public sidewalk system. It would have to be located behind the sidewalk, and no portion could encroach on the sidewalk, but it would still need to be incorporated into the sidewalk system. And again, it had to be located on a concrete or other hard surface approved by the Director of the Public Works Department. Has to comply with all ADA requirements. If it is not, if it, the adjoining or contiguous property owner would have to give approval. One of the locations that's been mentioned is Kroger, so the owner of that shopping center would have to okay the location of this in front of their str- in front of their business. And lastly, it must be maintained by the operator of the bus or transit system, which in this case, again, would be UCHRA. Proposed amendment has been approved by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Department recommends for its adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Have you had any opposition to this?
No, we had none at the Planning Commission, and I've received no calls since.
We talked about this quite a bit in the Planning Commission to come up with this list of 10 to make sure the city was covered under this. So we've spent quite a bit of effort trying to come up with this, and the Planning Department's done a good job.
Just to be, make sure everybody's clear, of course, we're not paying for the bus shelters. The city is not.
No.
It is a grant through UCHRA, correct?
Yes, they've received a grant.
And they will also maintain the bus shelters.
Yes.
City will not have to maintain the bus shelters.
By ordinance, they're required to maintain if this is what.
All we're doing is just saying, giving the restrictions as to how they have to be constructed, where they can be, where they can't be, those type things, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just make sure nobody's confused. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 4, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance 130407, rezoning to 225 Kenway Street from RS10, single-family residential, to CL, local commercial. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this rezoning request was initiated by the property owners Rhonda Gahl and Ronald Gahl. The subject property is identified as a portion of parcel 2 on tax map 270, Group A, and it consists of approximately 1.26 acres. It has frontage on both Kenway Street and North Dixie Avenue. It's contiguous with properties zoned as RS10 to the east, CL to the north, and as RD, single and duplex residential to the south and west. There are multifamily developments located on properties adjacent to the north and south, and a non-conforming construction company is located adjacent to the properties to the east. Here's an aerial view, and you can see the construction company that I'm talking about. Here's multifamily, and here is multifamily. The property was combined with parcel 3 on the same tax map in February of this year, and I'll go back to the original. This was previously two parcels, but it's been combined into one. And as you can see on the zoning map, the zoning of the property is split with the original parcel 2, which consists of approximately .75 acres zoned as CL, and the remaining of the portion that's being considered tonight zoned as just slightly over 1 1/2 acre. And I'll go back to this aerial photograph. As you can see, the portion of the parcel located here has a vacant commercial structure on it, which is encroached, actually owned to the what, the portion that's being combined into here, so it's now located, of course, on just one track. In the petition for rezoning, the Gahls indicate they would remove this existing vacant commercial structure and construct a multifamily or an apartment complex. Multifamily residential is a permitted use in the CL district with a minimum density of 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Approximately 10 units could be constructed on the portion of the property that's already zoned as CL. By rezoning, this would allow an additional 8 units or a total of 18 units on the property. By code, when you're adjacent to single-family zone, you must install a screen and buffer yard, which in this case would be a type 2 screen. But if you can look at the aerial photograph, the screen would probably protect them more than it would the other way. So we believe this is an appropriate location. The rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Department recommends for its adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Now, is, to the, I can't find the northeast, southwest. I guess it's to the east.
Yeah, this would be to the east.
Yeah, is that the construction?
Yeah, this is.
Okay. And you said it was non-conforming because it was there before?
Well, yeah, and it's RS10. That's, if you can see vision, that's right in here.
Okay.
It's RS10.
All right.
This is definitely going to be an improvement in the neighborhood, for sure. Particularly, they had to put a barrier up against where that abandoned construction materials have been left.
You're asking if it was non-conforming because it got annexed in, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, it was non-conforming because that's the way it was when we acquired it, right? And the zoning or...
As far as I know, that's the case. I'm not sure the exact date of the annexation of this area.
Okay, yeah.
But it's still a non-conforming use. The current use doesn't comply with the zone.
Okay. And they proposed to take those buildings down?
They proposed to take these buildings down.
Okay, all right.
And the apartments or the multifamily development will be located in here. They're here if you've got...
No, I mean...
But that's the plan, or that's what they've indicated. And again, basically, this would allow 8 additional units, and we believe it's a reasonable offer, a reasonable proposal, in that we'll, the big incentive here is we can get this structure removed.
Right, right. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 5, hold a public, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance 130408, RAO Redevelopment Area Overlay District, zoning for 319 West 7th Street. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, as you know, the RAO district was created this year and actually became effective a couple of months ago. The overlay district was created as a mechanism for redevelopment, revitalization, rehabilitation, and general improvement of areas within the city of Cookville identified in our 2030 Plan as being in need of such action, or areas within the city, other areas within the city that we've determined to be in need of such action. Within the RAO districts, the city may waive or modify certain development requirements to provide incentives for redevelopment, and these would include increasing the density, reducing setbacks, or reducing lot sizes. Specific criteria must be met for properties to qualify for RAO zoning, and a detailed process for approval must be followed. Only those uses allowed within the underlying zoning may be permitted in an RAO overlay zone. To qualify for an RAO zoning, the site must contain a minimum of 1 acre, and again, must be within an area identified in our plan. Developer must submit and adhere to a development plan. The process for approval of RAO zoning involves several steps. The first is the developer must meet with the Planning Department to determine whether the property is appropriate for such zoning. If it's determined that it's appropriate, then the developer must sit, submit to the Planning Commission a request for overlay zoning, a written statement describing the proposed development and how it meets the objectives of the 2030 Plan, and a preliminary RAO concept plan. The concept plan must include site floor and elevation plans, and the Planning Commission, after reviewing the overlay request and the required submittals, must submit a recommendation to the City Council for approval, modification, or denial of the request. Upon receipt of the Planning Commission recommendation, which is the step we're at tonight, the council will then consider enactment of the overlay. Once the overlay is enacted, a final RAO plan would then be submitted to the Planning Commission, and the plan must be submitted within 6 months after the effective date of the overlay zoning as established by the City Council. This ordinance before us would be our first RAO redevelopment overlay district, and again, that's why I wanted to go through the process there, since we're, this is our first one. And it's located in an area between West 7th, West 8th, North Willow, and Laurel Avenues. The site consists of 1.75 acres. It previously consisted of 7 parcels, and here's the zoning that I'll come back to. Here's an aerial view. This is a combination plat that was completed in 2011. It was 7 tracks that were combined into 1. The site is within an area identified in our 2030 Plan as being need, being in need of redevelopment and revitalization. And again, the underlying zoning of this track is CL Local Commercial. And we go back to the aerial photograph. The primary use, current use of the property is single-family residential. Located on the property were 6 single-family dwellings and 1 large shed or barn. This shows the structures that were located on the property. 2 of the dwellings and the barn have already been removed. This is existing conditions that were submitted with the proposal. These structures were considered to be in dilapidated condition, and the remaining structures, those that have not yet been removed, are also considered to be at least in deteriorated condition. And I also note that the removed structures were, have been condemned as environmental hazards, and that's the reason that they've already been removed. The developers have submitted a preliminary RAO concept plan, which the master plan portion is depicted on the screen. They've also submitted the other required materials, which included the written statement, site plan, floor plans, elevation plans, photos, and other materials, and each of the, each of you should have a copy of the RAO package that was submitted by the developers. Townhouses are what is proposed on this location, or what we also refer to as single-family attached dwellings. They indicate in their package that all, the structures will be all brick with fiber cement shake accents. Townhouses are RAO use permitted on review by the Planning Commission in the CL district. The site plan indicates the townhouses will be clustered into 3 groups of 9, of 2-story dwellings, and 1 group of 8 units, which would also be 2-story dwellings. These would have kitchen, living, and dining areas on the first floor. Here's the front elevations. And here are the floor plans. And then on the second floor would have 2 bedrooms and 2 baths. Again, the elevation plans indicate all brick construction, and according to the submitted development schedule, if the RAO request is approved, the existing, remaining existing structures will be removed within 60 days, and that new construction for the remaining units will be completed within 1 year after the effective date of the final RAO plan. The master plan depicts construction of sidewalks along West 8th and Laurel Avenues. They also indicate that they would utilize a rain garden for stormwater detention instead of a detention pond. This is the rain garden location here, will be a landscaped. For any of y'all that took the tour of the development on West Kentucky, or Old Kentucky, would be a grassed area. It's not one of these, it's not, will not be a rip rack, rap, detention pond. All the proposed units would be accessed from interior drives and parking areas. There would be no direct vehicle access from public streets to any of the dwellings, and canopy trees along all street frontages are planned. So these would be the fronts of the structures, and you'd have a grass area in front of those with no direct access. It would be all interior. According to the submitted materials, the petitioners wish to construct 35 townhouses on this property, which is an increase of approximately 10 units over what could be constructed under the current CL zoning. Again, which, which requires a minimum of 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Under the provisions of the RAO district, the city may allow a density of up to, bonus of up to 20 units per acre, and the 35 is the max at that. So that's, they're asking for the max, which that also brings it down to 2,178 square feet per dwelling unit. The petitioners also requested a reduction in the front setback requirements to 15 feet along West 7th and to 18 feet off West 8th and Laurel Avenues. The minimum front setback requirement in the CL district is 30 feet. Earlier this month, the Code Department, in conjunction with the Planning Department, approved an averaging of setbacks of existing structures along West 8th and Laurel Avenues, which did allow them to reduce the setback to 18, 18 feet in here, and that was based on the existing structures that were removed, which there's a provision in our code in Section 204.3 that allows us to do that. So the variance that was considered by the Planning Commission was a reduction of this area by 7 feet. And if I can go back to the plat, a few years ago, the city acquired a portion of West 7th Street to install a turning lane, and on that basis, partially on that basis, it created a hardship, which part of their property was, was acquired to widen that. So, long story short, the Planning Commission approved the variance to reduce the setback along West 7th Street. And also, when the, the 7 lots were combined, the developer dedicated 25 feet of right away from center line. So basically, that places the property line 8 feet to the back of the sidewalk. So in essence, you would still have, with the reduction, the structure would still be 23 feet from the back of the sidewalk. So it pretty, visually would meet typically what you would think of for a setback. In summation, the Planning Commission has approved the preliminary RAO concept plan for the development of 35 single-family attached dwellings and the requested setback reductions, and has recommended that the City Council establish a RAO redevelopment area overlay zone for the requested area, and the Planning Department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Everybody get that? Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'm very impressed that, you know, we just approved this, what, last month, and already people are moving on it, and that's the whole point of this RAO plan or district or whatever, and I think it's, it's great. What a great location, too.
Yeah, and if you have been to the site or visited the site before construction, where they started removing the structures, you can see that this area fit right in with what we were intending to address in our, in our plan, and I appreciate you saying that, about, we believe this would be a catalyst for a, for a larger area. We hope it is.
Well, and again, more, you know, more single-family residents in town, and even though they're multi-structured, you know, it's intended for a family to own that piece of property and, or that townhouse, and I just think it's great.
Now, this fits into an area the Planning Commission has identified west of Willow that is needing to be addressed because there was some housing over there that was substandard. And if you'd been on this property before, some of those houses, you could see that this is going to be a much, much improved neighborhood. And also, it's on a very busy street, Willow, and people coming to the tech campus, either for ballgames, or just, you know, students coming and visiting the hospital. This is going to be very visible and a, and a bright spot instead of a sore spot visually for the city.
Have you had any comments from the neighbors?
We had one comment at prior to Planning Commission. It was a property owner that lived in here, and he was concerned, not so much about the proposal for the RAO, was about debris from the, from removing the structures, and that's what he'd called about. But we have no, what we have had is several other property owners in the area calling to ask if their property would qualify. And I think it's significant to note, and since we have the press here, that we can't do, it's not intended to do 1 lot at a time. This needs to be more of a comprehensive, and again, we have that minimum size requirement of 1 acre. Now, you could add on to this 1 lot or so at a time. But to go back in there, you know, I had a call from a realtor wanting to know if they could tear down 1 house and build, and that's not the intent here.
Right.
We want to do this in a comprehensive fashion as best as we can.
Yeah. Change the character of a neighborhood more, is it just 1 dwelling?
James, I just really appreciate that, of course, you guys have been, the Planning Commission's been working on this for quite a while, and I've seen you've kept the City Council abreast of this, and we've, I've been waiting expectantly for this night because a couple of reasons, you know? As long as I've been here, we've, we've kind of changed, our city's changed. We're much bigger now than we used to be. I remember when I first got here, excuse me for carrying on a little bit, when I first got here, I asked, I moved from a big city, and I asked my, my future partners to, to drive me around the worst part of town. That's why I wanted to see the worst part of town, because when I lived in Kansas City, I lived in a really bad part of town, and the worst part of town was pretty nice. Here, here in Cookville, I'm like, God, that's a pretty nice place. That's changed. Our worst parts of towns in, in many cases can be, can be substantial in fact that they, they breed things that go on that shouldn't be going on in this, in our fair city. So I, I think this is, this is a very important moment for, for our cities and our city's future, and I, I hopefully will be able to look back as a council, as a planning commission, as a developer, we can look back on this and say, you know, this, this was a moment when, when Cookville, and Cookvillians made a change, and we took, we took charge of trying to improve our blighted areas. So I, I'm very excited about this, and thank you for letting me kind of carry on a little bit with that.
I do think that, I think it's important to note that, you know, while we've set forth with some statutes or provisions that would allow this, the key portion of this is the developer. They've got to purchase the properties, and, you know, and I, you know, we're appreciative of, of the development group there. Mr. Bernhardt's here, if you, you know, if you'd like to ask him some questions, but, you know, it's a, it's a partnership, and for lack of a better way to describe it, on what we're trying to do here.
Well, one thing that I'm thinking is where those people, the people who live there, they literally will be able to walk to a lot of the stuff that they need or want. Grocery stores, shopping, that kind of thing, and, you know, that encourages people to get out and be out. So I'm excited about it.
I just want to say, great job to the Planning Department.
Planning Commission.
For working through this. We, when we did the 2030 Plan back in 2009, approved in 2010, probably, there was 3 areas that, that was, it was identified as blighted, depressed, dilapidated, and that was, what, 2, a little over 2 years ago, that that was recognized, and now we've...
Acted on it.
We've acted on it. We've put, we've put a plan in motion, enabled to, that enables us to do something about that, and, you know, government, that's a pretty quick term, government. So we've done that, and that's also, as, as I think Councilman Woodford noted, that, of course, that is, that's right across from the entrance to Tennessee Tech, to our hospital, our regional hospital. That is when we direct all the Blue Cross, Blue Shield Bowl participants and family members and fans, they come straight up Willow Avenue from, from west of here, and they turn right on 7th, and so they'll be seeing something new, something that looks, that we can be proud of, and, yeah, no pressure at all.
We'll be looking.
You can do it.
But anyway, I just want to say, job well done. That's exactly what this council would, likes to see, and, and we hope that everybody else can be proud of it as well. Mr. Bernhardt, good job.
Planning Commission.
I just think this shows that the city is trying to help in the development. You know, a lot of times you used to talk about government, it's a roadblock, and I think this is a way we're trying to show that we're trying to remove that barrier and be more progressive on how we change our city.
Anything for the audience? Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item 6, consider approval for a capital renovation of the central supply area and construction of the pharmacy to relocate to the shell space located at the North Patient Tower. Sponsor is CRMC CEO, Mr. Paul Corf.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the Board of Trustees here tonight, to ask for your consideration and approval of a project that they voted on and approved at the last Cookville Regional Medical Center Board Meeting, and that is to renovate and expand our central sterile area, and with that, we'd also, would move the pharmacy location because of its adjacent proximity to the central sterile unit. This is one of the projects that fits into our master plan at the facility. We had a facility master plan done about 2 years ago, and this was one of the 3 top items that was identified. Emergency room was 1, and that project was completed in January, and this is kind of the 2nd project that, that leads from that master plan. We would expand central sterile. Currently, it's in about 6,000 square feet. The master plan says that in order for future expansions and growth at the hospital, that we need about 10,000 square feet. So the pharmacy department that's located adjacent to that is about 4,000 feet. So we would take that pharmacy and build a new pharmacy and shell its current space that's within the facility. It's about 5,500 square feet. The project will span over about 30 months after approvals from both the council and the state. The State Certificate of Need Board would have to approve because we have to go in front of their board to approve any project over $5 million. This project is anticipated not to exceed $12 million, which is for the renovation of approximately 10,000 square feet, new construction of approximately 40, or 5,500 square feet. And in that price, it includes all of the construction cost, the A&E fees, equipment, and all the other fees and permits that are required to do this. Like, like I said, this project will take anywhere from 30 to 36 months, so it will span over 4 budget, budget years. So from an expenditure standpoint, we'll be able to operate, or take the funds out of the operations of the hospital and pay for this, and pay for this project over that time period. So there won't be any additional funds that will be, need to borrow any additional debt at the medical center. Be glad to answer any questions if there are any, but again, we, the hospital would consider your consideration and approval of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Corf. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any questions, comments from the council?
I know that, that this council sat in on a planning retreat, or I guess just a retreat just recently, and when you look at the master plan and the way that this is all laid out, and the fact that this is going to be paid for and cash on hand, we're very impressed with that, or I was impressed with that, and, and that's quite a boon to our community that hospital is, and I know that when I drive over there now, it's something to be really proud of, the way it looks, the way it operates, and really like the fact that you're not borrowing money.
Yeah. Well, with the, with healthcare reform and the uncertainties and reimbursement down, down the road, that's one of the things that we definitely have to look at every day, and we're... And we're forced to look at every day at the medical center. And, you know, borrowing additional funds right now, it's not the time to do that. So that's why this project fits very well in the plan, and it will be spanned over a few years here.
Yeah. I want to thank you and the board for being realistic in this expectation that what's, healthcare's on everybody's mind right now. And staying over a four-year period of time and doing it with your own cash flow and not having to go out and borrow money is very easy for us to digest as far as, you know, we worry because, you know, your budget's about 10 times as large as the city. So thank you for being very cautious and conservative on your approach to the future. Thank you.
Yes. I just want to say that, you know, I feel like CEO Paul Korth and I, we're at a, I guess most of our day in a, in a meeting down at Vanderbilt about the state of healthcare and the future and that sort of thing. And what I'm seeing from the administration and the board is, is they're very willing to act and be proactive to get ahead of, of things that may be coming down, down the pipe. And this is one of them. And this is, this is a need. You know, this is not just, oh, we think we may need this in the future. This is a current need. And by getting this done, you know, that just, that just gets us ready for everything else that's coming our way. So I just want to, my hat's off to, to the administration of, of the hospital for, for doing this, being proactive, being ready for what's coming. Anything from the audience? All right, seeing none? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Councilor. Item seven. Consider appointment of City of Cookeville representative to the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport Board. Sponsor is Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and Council, Bob Mackey, his term expires on the airport board in April of this year. So it's already expired, I guess, hasn't it? He's served two and a half terms, almost eight years, so he's about done, I think. Danny Koontz has agreed to serve in his four-three-year term. And I guess I'd recommend your approvals, because we don't have anybody else that wants to serve. Danny will good to do that job.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
We're always glad when somebody's willing to serve.
Yes, absolutely.
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight. Consider awarding bid for steel casings for poles at Highlands Industrial Business Park. Sponsor is Electric Department. Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor, Council. We solicited an open seal bids for the steel casings for the five foundation poles that we've been talking about, especially at the last meeting. And I'd recommend OPS Sales Company as a low bidder meeting specs. We're buying 150 linear feet of the steel casing for the holes. Recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
Seeing none? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. And then the addition to the agenda would be the emergency purchase police department. Sponsor is Chief Bob Terry.
Mayor and Council, recently we had a catastrophic shutdown of the generator at the police department that's our backup generator. We managed, we got one, we have one quote. We looked around to get competing quotes, and this is the closest company to us that can get to us the fastest. And probably we'd budgeting next year some sort of a maintenance agreement with the same company to take a look at it periodically. Would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
What happened? I mean, did it just go down?
It broke. Seriously, it, it has a shaft in it, and the shaft got twisted and it broke. The generator, actually, Major Dukes is here, he's the generator guy.
Oh, okay.
But it's a, literally a car engine, and runs off a shaft, and it's, we'll come, we'll show you sometime.
Where's the power point?
I was going to ask Ronnie to do this for me, because he's, he's a pro at this stuff.
How soon will they, the city, the police department have this on, the replacement working? Is it on order now? Or has it already been replaced?
It'll be ordered tomorrow.
Okay. How soon will you have it?
They should start working on it next week.
So by this time next week, it'll be operational?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
We hope we don't have a massive power outage in the meantime.
As well.
Just to, just to follow that kind of statement up, I'm sure you have plans in place if, if we do have a power outage, walkie-talkies and et cetera.
We can function.
Smaller generators?
We can get by, but we can just get by better with a generator.
Yeah. I know, I was going to point out, Vice Mayor Epps asked about, you know, it seems like a little expensive, but asked about a, a new generator. And what did we get? What were we thinking, $40,000, $50,000 or so?
$60,000.
$50,000 to $60,000?
Let's spin this.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's fix it.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And I think the police department would also like to add, we're happy to see the renovation of Seventh Street as well. We spend a little bit too much time in that area, and maybe this is slow some of it.
I remember, you got your police report for the year 11, 12, and yeah, well, I noticed that, too.
Hopefully, we'll clean up a lot more of it.
Yeah.
No pressure. All right, item nine. This is actually when we're going to open the floor. But item nine is hearing from Leadership Putnam Group on a proposed mural project. And then after that, we will open up the floor to any, hearing of any citizens or delegations.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Jeff Auberson, part of Leadership Putnam this year. Thank you for your time. Last year, one of the groups had presented a mural for Dogwood Park on the Presbyterian Church big block wall. We didn't get that, well, they didn't get that done. So as our group, we took over trying to find a better and easier way to put a mural up there for Dogwood Park instead of the graffiti and the eyesore when you're walking through. And I know y'all have been putting up trees and things like that. But we've come up with a way, instead of spending about $16,000, $17,000 to have that wall painted, is it's going to be like a billboard. It's going to cost $5,985. A third of the price it was going to cost you before. But these are going, pictures are going to be in black and white. It's going to last three to five years. And what we're proposing is we're asking the city forever to. And the reason we're doing that is Leadership Putnam is going to take ownership of this. And every three to five years, when this needs to be done, Tammy O'Dell with Leadership Putnam, we're going to have a class that's going to be raising money each year. But it's going to be like a picture album. Okay? So when you turn the page in five years, you're going to have a total different pictures of, of the City of Cobble, of the history. We've got all the pictures from the history museum here in Cookeville. And one of the projects we'd like to do is get the community involved. You know, in a couple of years, we could have a fundraiser in Dogwood Park, going along with asking the community to come out with any old pictures that someone may have with their house that we could take a copy of. And we can get with the City of Cookeville Council, every year that we're going to put a new mural up and the Presbyterian Church, and make sure everybody's on the same guidelines of what pictures everybody agrees upon. We've got a few, 20, 25 pictures up there now that we're going to try to get implemented or that we picked out that we like, if we get some of those up there.
I'm trying to get there.
And all these are going to be in black and white, and there's going to be three stages. So if there is something that happens, graffiti, or not so much if it rips, because we're not going to have no wind behind it, it's going to be on that wall. We're not going to do much cleaning on the wall because we can just go straight over top of it. But like, there's one with Cream City, we're going to have it set up there, but this Cream City is going to be in red. And I know that there's going to be different pictures that everybody could like. But we try to take some of the pictures, like going down towards...
That way.
That way. Looking at some of the old pictures going down towards Crowd Addys and stuff on, you know, we try to take some, on the walls, we try to take some stuff like that in Dogwood Park. There's some of the, the old courthouse, you know. And the fun thing of this is, is it's never going to be a never-ending story. You know, you can always add and change every three to five years. As a standpoint, I know it's a lot of money, $6,000. But as an investment for 10 years, a minimum of 10 years of what we're asking the church for, that it's thinking not be taken down, is, is under $800 a year to have a turning history in your, in your park. And I, I do know, I have a small landscaping company, I do know that some of the problems, the issues may be some of the new trees that you've planted. I think as a landscaper, we can get some other landscapers to donate some time to maybe replace some of these trees, you know, that is going to coordinate with your last couple phases or phase two, or your last phases with the park to make sure everything is in place, not anything out. But we have not heard back from the church, we thought we would by today, of what kind of contract was going to have from them, because we asked that there be no advertising. So whoever makes the mural is not having their name on it. I don't, as Leadership Putnam and the church, and I think as a city, we want to be neutral. But the best thing is, like, here's Cream City on the bottom left, they can put that Cream City in red. Okay? There's different things that we can do with it. But with it being in black and white, I think that brings back history the way photographs used to be. From one, two, it makes the longevity of the mural longer. So any questions for us, or?
I actually did hear back from one of the church members. In the contract, they basically want us to say that we will be responsible three to five years, either Leadership Putnam or someone, to either take it down or keep it up, keep it going. And that was really all they wanted to know. You know, if it, if it gets vandalized, how will that get replaced? The good thing is, it is three sections, so if somebody sprays on it or whatever, it's really actually easily to clean. But you could actually just remove one section and put it back up without having to do the whole thing. So that was their main concerns.
One of the things I looked at over the painting, when we started looking at trying to get this mural up, because we take, I, I got a, a nine and a, and a five year, we'd like to take over to Dogwood Park and play, and thank y'all for building it. But, you know, it's kind of a nice one. There's some graffiti that goes up and the church takes it down and stuff. But I just think as, as, I'm 40, growing up in this town now, and my children love being over there, I like to be able to see someone's face in a couple of years, like, that's changed. You know? But we started looking at trying to get it painted, and from what we understand is if there is graffiti that goes up, it's $500 for a gallon of paint. Okay? Then plus artists to come back and redo what's wrong. So the significant, I mean, the funds to get this up and going is about $6,000. But over three to five years, for Leadership Putnam, we'll have classes to raise this money. That's going to be a part of the projects of one of them. We've got a commitment out of Leadership Putnam to do that. You know, and hopefully the church will give us 10 or 10-plus years. But I think if we get this going, and the city, council and the church can agree on pictures when it comes up for time, I think it'll be a good mural to have.
Thank you, Mr. Auberson. Questions, comments?
When's your class graduating?
We graduate actually this month, but we'll...
May the 10th.
But we will keep going until we get it up. Actually, they, the person that designed this for us said, from the time we get the okay with the funds, he could have it up within 30 days.
Appreciate you guys. This is something that I've, that, that I've made mention for, for a while. And it's, it's, this is another example of, you know, things that can happen if we all work together. I've seen this, I've seen this, something of this sort in other big cities, and it's, it's a, it produces a huge amount of community pride for something just as simple as taking, again, maybe blighted unsightly areas and turn it, turn it into an art project that produces civic pride. I really like the idea of the, of using the screening instead of the paint. It saves us money, saves everybody money, and it can be changed. I, I hope this serves as an incubator. I, I want to see you guys do this and do this well. As a council member, I'll help any way I can to see this is done right. I look forward to its fruition. I look forward to being done in the right way, that it promotes its longevity and that it doesn't get scrapped five or six, 10 years down the road. I'd like to see this as an incubator for other places. Think of the community places where we have Tennessee Tech, Cookeville High School, the West End, of just three I can make mention of right now that would, that could do something like this to, to improve, improve those areas dramatically. So I appreciate what you guys are doing, and as a council member, I'll do anything I can help to get this done.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming forward. First off, for being in the class, that means you care. So that's, that's big to us, when, when people care about their community. But secondly, the last class came, came to us, and I think they kind of ran out of time, really, is, is kind of what I gathered, because they were hot on it for a while. Vice Mayor Epps and I met with him a couple of times, and, and I knew he had, he'd, it was ironic that they called me about that project, because you had just mentioned something about murals, probably two months before they called me. And I thought, let's get, you know, Vice Mayor Epps involved, because I know he, he's really passionate about that and about that particular project. So, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen with the last class. And again, I'm, I think it's a good idea. I, I think it's pretty neat. I mean, we get a lot of people talk about the cityscape signs that are downtown and across the West Side, and, you know, that tells a good story as well. So, you know, anything we can do to help make the city look better and, and tell its story, you know? We've got a story to tell.
Well, we would recommend that if, if it's okay through the council, and then we get the okay through the church, which we will get the okay through them, it's just some guidelines and some pictures, that we would bring back the pictures that they really like and make sure everybody's on the same page with the pictures. But then, you know, if we get the okay, at that point, we've got basically 30 days or less that we can have it up.
They've actually seen all the pictures we just showed y'all, and they, they...
They may want to change one or two, they said. Dr. Birdy is on that board, so, here from Tennessee Tech, so he might want to change a couple.
And you know, the, the way we had it set up, it kind of goes along with the historical walk pictures. It's already up, it really, it's like those. So I just think it kind of puts it all together.
Have a little continuity with that.
And all the photos came from the Cobble Museum. So we hope that creates, you know, even more advertisement, you know?
For the museum?
Yeah. See that story and then walk over to the museum.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming forward. We'll, we'll definitely have to talk about it. Of course, budget session, budget work session's coming up in a couple of weeks, and so this would...
I'll be there.
This would be...
It'll be next week.
Yeah. So we'll...
It's the week after.
Week after.
Week after, excuse me.
We'll discuss it. And of course, there's a lot of moving parts, so this will be an ongoing dialogue if we move forward, so.
If, if we get the, hear anything back from the church, can we email that to someone so y'all know that what we've got from them, so you can talk?
Yeah.
We'll take care of that.
But we look, look forward to talking more with you guys, and we'll, we'll discuss it some. And I'm sure we'll, we'll probably have additional questions, I imagine.